Planning Commission meeting for December, not December, January 20, what's today? Twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. I got that part right. I apologize for being late. This fell off my calendar, but got over here as soon as I could. All right, so we, Ms. Clerk, can you call for the roll?
Mr. Bills?
Yes.
Mr. Foley? Mr. Muncy?
Here.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Here.
All right, our first order of business here is to swear in one of our renewed Commission members, and this time, I don't know if we have to stand and do this? So I'd like to just review the procedures for the audience and the applicant. First of all, the staff will present the case, and then I will ask the applicant to, if they would like to make a presentation or anything to add to the staff report. I will ask Commission members if they have any questions for staff or the applicant, and I will ask for a motion to open the floor to public comment. I'll then ask for public comments in favor and opposition of the application. At that time, you'll be able to come up forward, and you'll be stating your name and address. We'll ask, and then, once you may give your comments, and we'll close the floor to public comment, and then I'll ask the applicant if they want to respond to any of the public comments. I'll ask if there's any further discussion from the Commission members, and I will ask for a motion to recommend approval, approval with conditions, or disapproval of the applicant's request. Lastly, I will ask for a motion to close the meeting. So at this time, if there's anybody that's planning on coming up in the public side to make any comments, I'd like you to stand and raise your right hand. And do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give to this Commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Has everybody in the Commission read the meeting minutes of March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three?
Yes.
If there are any comments or revisions needed, I would need a motion. No comments? I'll take a, is there a motion for approval then?
Move to approve the March, sorry, yeah, March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Yes.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And then, secondly, we have meeting minutes of November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Are there any comments or revisions needed? If not, then we'll, I'd like a motion for approval?
Move to approve the November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
You have to abstain. Mr. Bills?
Abstain.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
So the board members to acknowledge receipt and understanding of the rules of procedure of the City of Clayton Planning Commission. Does anybody have a chance to go over that? Okay, then, can I have a motion for approval?
I move to approve the procedures of the Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
I second.
Anybody have any questions about that? All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
All right, next, we have approval of the two thousand twenty-four Planning Commission schedule. May I have a motion for approval?
Motion to move, I'm sorry, a motion to approve the City of Clayton Planning Commission's schedule for two thousand twenty-four.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
All right, appointment, next order of business is appointment of the two thousand twenty-four Planning Commission Chair. Does anybody have any nominations to be made?
We appoint you.
There's no objection, I think we'll reappoint Mr. Bills for the chair.
All right. Is there a motion? Except that, except that what, that's what that was, I assume?
Oh, yeah, I moved in on Mr. Bills for the Chair of the Planning Commission.
All right, is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, now we, the next order of business is appointment of the two thousand twenty-four Planning Commission Vice Chair. May I have any nominations? Is this a case where you, if you're not here, you probably get made the?
I think I'll go ahead and nominate Dan Foley for the Vice Chair position.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other nomination? I didn't think so. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
So, next is appointment of Barb Stein, Clerk of Council, as Commission Secretary. We have a motion to appoint Barb?
I move that we appoint Barb Stein to the Clerk of Courts for two thousand twenty-four.
Clerk of Council.
Clerk of Council, sorry, yes, apologize.
So is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
All right, so now we'll get on to the case we're here to hear about. This is case PC twenty-three dash zero five. We have staff presentation?
It is now. Good evening, I'm Amanda Zimmerlin, I'm the City Manager, I'm filling in for Jack since he's left us until we have a new Development Director, so we'll get to work together for a little while. This is case PC twenty-three oh five. So, introduction to this application, the application was received in November of two thousand twenty-three for a plan modification to a previously approved final development plan specifically for Phase Two of the Village of North Clayton. The applicants and the property owners are Kurt and, excuse me, Kurt and Kathy Krim. Public notice was printed in the Eaton Registered Herald on December sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and letters to property owners within three hundred feet of the site were postmarked and mailed in November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. The property is located on lots six and seven on Steinman Street in the Village of North Clayton. Parcel numbers are M six zero, one six three two three, zero zero six, and M six zero, one six three two three, zero zero seven, with a total land size of approximately a quarter acre. Currently zoning of parcel is PDD, so Plan Development District, and staff reviewed and provided each Planning Commission member the following documents, the application, the site plan, elevation, Phase Two, Village of North Clayton Approved Site Plan. And I need to go have my eyes checked apparently, because that is hard to read. The applicants desire to build their new single-family home in the Village of North Clayton. The applicants have purchased lots six and seven on Steinman Street, which is located in an area included in the originally approved Phase Two of the Village of North Clayton Plan Development District, which was approved in Clayton, or, excuse me, by Clayton City Council back in two thousand and five. The Phase Two Final Development Plan was approved with a mixture of residential types and parcels with varying lot sizes, ranging from lot widths of forty feet all the way up to ninety-plus. Specifically on Steinman Street, there were townhomes and single-family lots approved with four townhome lots identified at the corner of Steinman Street and Annalee's Way, and the remainder of the seven lots identified and approved are single-family lots, or in the forty to forty-nine foot lot width series. So those are the two lots that are in question with the alley that runs behind. And then there it is with the larger surrounding area. So the analysis of the request, since the time of the original Phase Two approval, four single-family homes have been built on single-family lots. Three remaining lots have not been built on, including six and seven, which were purchased. The applicant has purchased the lots in question and desires to combine the lots to build their new single-family home. Lot seven has a lot width of forty-six feet, ninety, excuse me, forty-six point nine-two feet, and lot six has a width of forty-five point four-four feet. Combined, the new lots would have a lot width of ninety-two point three-six feet. If this property was not located in the Plan Development District, staff would be able to approve this request administratively, because it meets all of the requirements of a minor lot combination, because the newly created lot will continue to meet all of the required development standards of the zoning district. However, since the property is located in the PDD, and it was approved by council, the proposal differ, or differs from what was originally approved, so it must come before Planning Commission and ultimately council. The applicant will be required to build a home to the standards of the Village of North Clayton community as regulated by the Village of North Clayton Architectural Guidelines. This includes having a rear-entry garage accessed by the alleyway in the rear. Sidewalks and building materials consistent with those standards, setbacks and other development standards would be required to be maintained as well. Clayton staff has reviewed the application and have no comments, the applicant requests, I'm sorry, the applicant request decreases the original density approved by case ZC oh five eleven, and will have zero negative impact on the community in terms of traffic, stormwater, and life safety factors. And then that is the approved final development plan. That is the elevation. It's a very, it's a, it's a pretty house. And then that is the floor plan. And then finally, the Planning and Zoning Code Guidance. So Section one-one-one point two-one of the Clayton Zoning Code addresses Plan Development Districts, PDD specifically. Section one-one-one point two-one P details the steps and processes for plan modifications for a PDD. Subsection one states, because the difficulty in being able to, being able to supply precise data at the time of approval of the final development plan, it may be necessary to make certain modifications to the final development plan at a later date, and that's what we're doing here today. And subsection two states, modifications to the final development plan shall not deter from the general intent and purpose originally approved by the City Council. No modification unless approved by the City Council shall be approved that will increase density or intensity, decrease parking and loading areas, and reduce unusable open space or reduce distance between structures and the perimeter property lines. The proposed plan modification reduces the overall density of the Village of North Clayton Plan Development Community, and has zero negative impact on the overall safety, traffic, and stormwater functions of the overall neighborhood. The proposed use meets all of the requirements of a planned development modification found in Section one-one-one point two-one P two specifically, that the proposed use will not decrease density or in, excuse me, will not increase density or intensity of the community when compared to originally approved plan. In comparison to the originally approved plan, the proposed lot combination will decrease the density and intensity of the land included with the request, and the proposed use will decrease, public park, will not decrease public parking or loading areas of the overall development. There are still, there are still the same public parking and loading areas available in the Village of North Clayton Community, including in the original plan, and the proposal also does not reduce the space between buildings or community open space. The proposed lot combo will increase the distance between homes and has zero impact on the community's open green space. Oh, and that's it? Do you have any questions for staff?
Can you go back to the? Can you go back to the site plan?
This one?
Yeah. So all the other houses in the area have the garage access from the rear?
They do, and this one will also have it from the rear.
Can you go back to the floor plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Would you be able to comment on the square footage of the house being built?
It will meet the requirements for a home or a lot, but once combined, that size, I think it's.
Yeah. Oh, my goodness, hold on.
So are you the applicant? Okay, so usually what we do is, after they make their presentation, we ask you to come up and make comments too, see if you? That's okay, but we, we have a procedure where you come up and your name and address and? Come on up.
How much?
Three thousand seven oh two is what it looks like on the under roof, yeah.
So, so I gotta ask you to do something for me?
Okay.
You, you were, could have been one of the people to stand up, and I know you, you didn't know you were gonna be up here speaking, so please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to this Commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Sure.
So your name?
My name's Kurt Krim.
And your address?
Currently, I live at fifty-seven Grady Court, that's Dayton, Ohio, four-five-four oh nine.
All right, and you had one question asked, what's the total square footage?
What I wanted to say is this is not the finalized plan.
Okay.
There will be changes made to this. Everything will be, obviously, within the requirements of the villages, but one thing I'm looking to do is kind of, I, to me, when I looked at the houses to the left and to the right of me, you know, they're pretty much very long and straight, and this one's pretty wide, and I thought that may be problematic for the whole aesthetics of the area. So what I'm trying to do is kind of take that garage and kind of maybe tuck it around back a little bit, so it's not so wide, and it is, you know, more of the front is, you know, you have the front, but get that garage back, and then that way, I don't think it'll, I think it'll look better, but, but that's yet to be finalized.
So you'll come, he'll have to come back to, to the zoning Planning Commission for that change?
But the, I believe the HOA will have to approve it. They have the authority.
I see, okay.
The only thing this body is considering tonight is the lot combination.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, we couldn't move forward until we knew that the lots could be combined.
Got it. Does, does anybody have any other questions for him?
Not for the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
For Amanda. In the original development plan, what was the widest lot?
The widest lot? I know there are lots out there that are plus ninety feet wide.
Wider.
Yeah, that would be, yes, yes.
Then I just wanted to clarify, the way that our code's written, we don't have a problem getting less dense, bigger lots.
Mm-hmm.
We have a problem if we get smaller, more density.
Yes.
There's really, shouldn't be.
Right, there's no impact, right, there's no impact.
Pushed back the other way.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, thank you. So at this time, can I have a motion to open this up to public session?
I'll move to open the floor for public comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Yes.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
So you're welcome to come up. Is your name and address and?
Sure.
Is this on? Okay. I'm Scott Fraser, forty-nine seventy-three Steinemann Street in Village of North, North Clayton, and I will be next-door neighbors to the Krim's, as a matter of fact. I am past president of the Homeowners Association for about four years, and I'm here because I've, with the Homeowners Association, we were aware that the original plans of the whole place were fairly restrictive in terms of, you know, you had to do just one lot, and you couldn't really combine them. That was about sixteen, eighteen years ago. And what we discussed was that, you know, we really wanted to give people a chance if they wanted to combine lots to go on ahead and do so. We've discussed it through our board, and then we discussed it in the whole community, and everybody was very much on the side of doing that. This would be the first opportunity to, to have that happen, and we're, we're really pretty excited. I'll also say that Kurt, in particular, Krim, has worked very closely with us. He's looked at a number of different lots, so on. I'd really commend them for getting the, the architectural guidelines, the, all of the specifications, and linking with builder who had built in the area. I just couldn't ask for more thorough, thorough work. And then finally, I'll just say that as we were going through, I said, well, you know what, if you really want to know, there's two lots right next to where I live, and I think they're, you know, that, that's a pretty nice location, and after they looked at it, they said, I think you're right. We didn't think that maybe there'd be bulldozers there or something, I don't know, but, but, you know, we're really pretty pleased with that, and so I just wanted to give you an opportunity to, to hear what we've sorted through, and we talked it through, and we really think that the idea of merging lots is a pretty good one. So, I don't know if there's any other questions that you have. Again, I'm the past president, and the current president's here too. All right, anybody else have any questions for him?
That, that was my question I was gonna ask, is if the neighborhood is okay with this, and you've answered that, so yes.
They, they really are, yeah. Thank you. Sure.
Hello, my name is Maria Brubaker, and I own eighty-nine seventy-nine Annalee's Way, so it's within the three hundred feet there, so I got the letter as well, and I'm now the current HOA president, and I just kind of wanted to mimic what Scott was saying, that the neighborhood is very supportive of hopefully getting more people to build as well along with the Krim's, but we're supportive of people merging lots, like especially if people have kids, they like to have a little bit more yard, I think that could be a very positive thing for continuing development there. And we're also hoping to see some more commercial things come up, which could also help maybe stimulate building back there as well. So we did just want to make you aware that the residents there are very supportive of this happening in the future as well, as well as the Krim's merging their lots as well. So if you have any questions for us, we're definitely happy to answer going forward as well.
I just have one, I just wanted to know if the residents made any indication as to, if, if all the mergers are fine, if one merger's fine, two mergers are fine, not three, if there's been any discussion like that, just, just to make sure we don't start rolling in the wrong direction.
Yeah, I, I know, I don't think, have we ever discussed three?
We didn't, we didn't, yeah, we didn't discuss three. It was just adjacent lots, and that had come up a time or two in, in the past, and earlier on, it was pretty, no, we can't do it, but after we sorted through, but no, not, we haven't discussed three.
Yeah, so two is definitely supportive, and that's something I'm willing to discuss the three, especially if that's something that the Development Committee is, would be supportive of as well, so.
So should I clarify, not, not three lots, but?
Oh, I thought you meant three at J.
But like, you know, maybe we come back in a month from now, and somebody else wants to do it, and somebody, and the next thing you know, we got more ninety-foot lots than we do, you know?
Yeah.
Sixty-foot lots, I don't know if that's a concern of anybody out there.
Up to this point, it hasn't been a concern, but it is something that we could discuss as well, so. I think we're hoping that more people would continue to build and would like to make it attractive for people to build in the future, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to make public comment? Anybody from the? Yes.
Like to do this thing?
Yes, you do. What's your name first?
William Benjamin.
And your address?
Four-four-one-six National Road.
So do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to this Commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I just have a question. So you guys planned, made this North City Clayton plan in two thousand and five?
Two thousand and five.
And so, I guess, I don't know how you do all this tax stuff or whatever, so how do you, I guess you plan this and you project how mu, how much property tax you're gonna come across over the years, right? So when you combine two lots, how does, and rezonate, so how does it affect the property taxes?
I'm not the right one to answer that. Probably?
I think, I think what you're asking is, does that go into, I guess whether or not the development was accepted, if there's fifty lots, that means fifty taxpayers are gonna be there, now we got forty-nine, because we got rid of a lot.
Yeah, I don't know, like, how does it all work, and how do you, how do you determine what people pay? Is it by the square footage of the house, or is it property size, or?
That's a better question for the Montgomery County Auditor, and not as much Clayton, but it's based on the value of the property, which?
Property taxes are always based on the value of the home, which also include the size of the property as well.
Right now, I have, I own two lots.
Yeah.
And I, they're roughly twenty thousand dollars apiece, and I combine it to one lot, it's gonna be forty thousand, so. I've never paid, I paid taxes in Clayton or Montgomery County before, and I don't ever recall the size of the lot having anything to do with the va, it was typically the value of the lot.
I just recently sold some property in Inglewood, and there were two parcels, each of them had a tax valuation on it, and I paid for both. So I don't think that combining them gets you out of paying, paying taxes.
So, does it?
To your point, I, I think I see where you're going, like, if you got two, one separate one-hundred-thousand-dollar houses, that's what was planned for it. I guess the problem here is that we have a lot of vacant lots out there that have twenty thousand dollars assessed to it, so now, you know, we're taking a, a previously unproductive lot and turning it into a tax-paying lot. So I think in the grand scheme of things, as it is now, where no one's been developing on it for sixteen years, twenty years, now we have the opportunity to make it productive where it wasn't before, if that's to maybe advocate for the position, but I do understand and respect the idea, like, hey, this had fifty lots, and now we have forty-nine, or whatever the, the number is.
I'm kind of looking at it from your standpoint of view, because you guys planned this back in two thousand and five, thinking each lot is gonna generate so many taxes, and then you're combining, which is rezoning, correct? Is that rezoning?
No, this is not a rezoning.
So you combine the two lots even though they're supposed to generate each individual property taxes?
No, this is, this is just simply a modification to the plan.
Okay.
It's not a rezoning.
Okay.
So, it's, this is a, a PUD, a Planned Unit Development?
So it has its own rules that guide it, and it's not necessarily a zoning change.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good questions.
All right, I think that's everybody. So anybody on the commission have any questions for the staff?
I, I do kinda back to that point I asked about the, to the Homeowners Association, I think the code mentioned something about, you know, keeping the character and maintaining, is a, at some point, not now, maybe not after one, two, three applications, but at some point, I would anticipate, I was saying, no more, no more lot mergers, or you gotta submit a new plan, I would assume that that would be the requirement of the city.
That the, the question is whether we would require them, or would no longer allow lot combinations?
At what point would we need a new Plan Development District?
I got you, at what point does it become no longer that plan? I don't know, I think that would really be a decision for this body to make, and then we'd have to make a recommendation to council to change the plan. Now, do I think that one lot combination is doing that? No. And do I anticipate others? Probably not, I mean, there's one developer who owns all of those other lots out there right now, and I think they're looking to build individual homes on those individual lots.
How many more lots are available?
I don't know off the top of my head how many are left out there, I'm sorry, but I can get that, I can get the information for you, but I don't know right now.
No, that's fine, I was just thinking, um, I saw that there were seven, is that just right in this area?
Yes, well, th, this is lot 6 and 7.
There's a lot of lots.
Yeah, there, there are quite a few lots still out there that are available, um, and I know that Windsor has, has them listed for sale.
It's a wonderful community, I have friends out there, I love it. Thank you.
But in consideration of this application, I mean, it's just those two lots that are already surrounded by, you know, constructed homes. And it's, yes.
The, the difference in the shading means nothing?
It means nothing, it's, that's just where the, the pin was so we could find the lot.
Gotcha.
So, again, Scott Fraser, um, so, um, when you're talking about, um, would there potentially be other mergers of lots, um, I, I, I've talked a lot to the principals of the Windsor Corporation, um, in the past, and, um, I know that they are, um, they are doing, um, financing for these lots, and they're advertising that they are potentially able to be merged, and they're doing that because, we talked to them about it, and we said, you know, uh, the community is supportive of it. So, back to the question of, could there be other mergers? Yes, I think there could be. Each and every time, um, the Owners Association will weigh in on it as well, um, so, but we've been supportive in a lot of different ways of that, so I know that Windsor is actually advertising it as they could potentially be merged, so... So, could I have a motion to come out of public session?
Move to, uh, close the floor to public comment.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
All right, so at this time, I'll look for a motion to either approve the applicant's request, approve it with modifications, or, um, deny it. May I have a motion?
I move that we approve the application as presented.
I second that motion. I'm sorry, I second.
All right, do we have any questions? All right, we have a motion, a second, please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
I second.